I wonder if there are chairs outside.
There's a back.
Standing room only, right?
I stand every time, so.
Hey, I see how you rate your time.
Not even a chair for you.
County Administrator, do your chair up.
I have the solicitor be glad to have this chair.
You can get mine up.
You can come right up here, no problem.
I'm not answering any of them.
Capital Propagated. I said they're motioning to put it out.
For how long?
They have it posted, but I think it's going to be post school.
Well, you know, I was thinking six months.
Now, all the meeting in Carver County, morning commissioners of order, please rise for a moment's silence for pledging allegiance. Lord be with us today as we meet, grant us the wisdom to know what we must do, the will to want to do it, the courage to undertake it, the perseverance to continue to do it, and the strength to complete it. We ask this in your name.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
These proceedings are going recorded for the sole purpose of constituting the accuracy of written minutes. Tapes are reused, eliminating recorded records of these proceedings. Approval of the minutes of the previous meeting held April 18th, 2019.
So moved, second motion.
Mr. Gore?
Yes.
Mr. Gerhardt?
Yeah.
Mr. Nottstein?
Yes. Okay, before I go into guests, I just want to announce we have the students from the Carver County Career Technical Institute with us today for Government Day, Jim Thorpe Area School District, Lee Hyten Area School District, Marion Catholic School District, Ammanan Area, Panda Valley, and Wiggly Area. We have three students, I believe, from each one and their faculty member. Welcome today, I hope it's been an informative day so far, and they'll have the opportunity to ask questions after the meeting. Okay, move on. Guests concerning county business at this time, are there any guests? Mr. Lukasevich.
Good morning commissioners, I'm wondering if your plan for the building on Sesquahana Street fails, do you have a backup plan? Like suppose they say you just can't build it there, it's not going to happen, do you have backup plans?
We'll be discussing that further on in the meeting.
It will be discussed at this meeting to the public?
Yes.
Or just among you three?
No, no, we'll make a public statement at the end of the meeting.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, my name is Mark Reitz. I'd like to, clarification of last week's minutes, the maintenance building that's built down here on Sesqu- meaning 600 yards from the building is here, it's a $600,000 county maintenance building, was put in place with no water, toilet facilities, it's 500 yards from the nearest bathroom in downtown Jim Thorpe. I'm a county main- I mean, I'm a maintenance worker, and I think it's pretty awful, you didn't put a bathroom in there. Your emergency training center up on the Broad Mountain consists of classrooms next to a prison on the Broad Mountain. You corroded last week, we are scrubbing the $15 million training facility for more critical programs right now, additional court space, money to fight the church. My question, why would you place a fire training center in a location that has no emergency access to water? Also Pendot has weight restrictions on the road. Kovach, who makes fire trucks, they have a little lake pond right off of 209 that they use to test their fire trucks. A fire truck pushes maybe 250 gallons a minute. Why would you overlook this? You know, why would you put a training facility up there and you have no access to emergency water? You know, plus Pendot is saying that they don't want trucks on that road because it's a very dangerous road at the prison, it's 1,600, it's at 1,600 feet. If you go to the top of the hill and you miss the entrance, you're at 2,000. If you come down that hill, your brakes are going to burn.
Brakes aren't going to burn if you know how to drive the truck.
Well, it says Pendot says don't come down that hill. I mean, how many accidents were on that hill? What, a dozen, two dozen? How many accidents were there? I have no idea, but I know that people lost their lives on that hill.
First of all, let me correct you on the amount of money for 15, for a thousand or a million for the training facility. As I stated last week, the classroom area, the garage area has been scratched, has been taken out because of the other building that we have to put up and used office space. So, begin with the pumps, you said 250 gallons a minute, those apparatus, and you're talking about 1,500 gallons a minute. The site was chosen by the training committee several years ago, there is a-
But they never took in consideration the water that they'd have to use. The prison uses so much water that no extra water can be used. I mean, we figured that out with Mr. Delosi delivering water.
There will be a retention pond.
It's not built though, right?
Pardon?
The retention pond is not there.
No, that's part of Phase 1A.
So then you're going to spend more money.
That's all part of that 3.5 million dollar project I talked about last week.
Grant money, I guess that's free money.
And I'd like, no, I'd like to address the, your maintenance building. I want to clarify, we've said it many, many times at this meeting, it is not, and I quote, "It is not a maintenance building, it is a storage facility."
Okay, then no, no equipment will be broken, nothing's ever going to be fixed, no trucks will ever break down?
It is a storage facility, sir. It is for storing all of our equipment under one roof. No heat, no water, no restroom facility, a storage facility, not a maintenance.
So people like me that work on trucks and maintenance have to walk 600 yards to a bathroom.
Okay, move on, next subject, Mr. R.
Okay. Yeah, my, my name is John Drury, I'm a concerned citizen, and I think it's great that these young people are here today because they're going to find out what kind of crap you guys have to go through and the rest of us constituents here in town. There's not enough time to give any background for the young people to know what's going on here because, you know, it's a short three minutes we get. I'm a member of the SOS Committee, that's the Sesquahana Street Committee regarding the sanctuary and the town as a sanctuary. We are a non-political group, we don't support any particular candidate. We're half and half, probably a few more Republicans than Democrats in it. And we're here only because we, for this three minutes we're allowed, because there's no other forum for us. We've not been invited to sit down and discuss the matters that concern us and that concern the rest of the citizens of the county. So there's no personal animosity with you guys, we're just doing our civic duty, fighting your undemocratic power politics leadership style, causing problems for your projects and for your constituents. So, our deal is this, you abandon this Sesquahana Street project, support the formation of an oversight group to help you in figuring out where you're going to get office space and parking, and then we'll back off our unrelenting effort to thwart your reelection. So, and that means not going into a public airing of the unresolved Packerton Yard fiasco. So, perhaps in a week you'll know just what you're going to do, or maybe you know it already, and we don't have to ask. But that'll give us time to know what we have to do and when we have to start full blast. Thank you.
John, can I ask you a question, please?
Yeah.
Would you please explain to me what you mean about toward their reelection or their reelection? I wonder what that phrase means?
It just means-
Because that references election and politics, and you just prefaced your remarks by saying you were not involved in politics.
We're not, we're not involved in politics to the extent, to the extent of supporting any particular side. We are neutral, we're looking at how you guys operate, okay, and how it's been for years. Jumping into programs without proper, with nobody looking into it ahead of time. And so as far as politics are concerned, we're, we're going to try, it has nothing to do with Democrats or Republicans. It has to do with leadership style and what's been going on here for years and years, and it's, and really it's dedicated to, it's dedicated to Tom Zimmerman, and how he was persecuted and prosecuted, and my own feeling that I was not helping, helping him out at that time. Nobody came to his rescue, he spoke truth to power and he got smashed, okay? This is dedicated, okay?
I respectfully agree with your right to have philosophical differences with decisions that we make here. But I wondered if you would be kind enough to explain to me what you meant when you said efforts to thwart reelection? Because that to me implies aiming at an election campaign, and I wondered what you meant by that.
We meant, we mean that we're going to tell the truth about what's happened, people, and that's what it means. Going to different areas in our county and making sure that people understand what has transpired, that's all that means.
Okay, so I'm just going to take that to mean, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, that while you said you were non-political, you are threatening to play a role in an election.
Well, you're threatening to bankrupt us.
I'm sorry, I'm sure your time's up, your time's up, and my question's aimed at Mr. Drurant.
Again, we're out to tell the people of the county, show them what has happened here, what has been happening here for years. If you're going to regard that as political, we're not. I don't regard it as political. And the other thing is, this kind of stuff doesn't have to go on here if you guys would grant us an audience. We can't, we can't get to you, we have no, no place to sit and talk, there's no forum except right here. And we're talking about stuff that could be worked out among us and come to some conclusion, okay?
I agree with you, but I'm not sure that I am endearing myself to wanting to have a meaningful discussion with people who stand before us and say that their efforts are geared at towarding reelection. So, you know, in my mind, John, in my mind, that implies motive, and, and, and that's not endearing to wanting to sit down and have meaningful discussions under the guise of a threat.
Well, take the threat away and invite us to sit with you.
Oh, you won't do that.
Well, I was going to say, thank you for your time.
One issue I'd like to point out also is, if you recall, I voted against the Packerton Initiative, nothing against the previous board or the other members I was with. But there was a member in this audience today that criticized me for voting against that project. And now I'm being criticized, you know, for not developing. We did what we could there, once we bought the property, okay, we're stuck with it, let's try to develop. But I was criticized heavily for not supporting an economic development project. And unfortunately, things did not work for us, you know, and that was at a public meeting where I was criticized. So, you know, and I felt there at that time that there were a lot of issues that it would be very difficult, you know, unfortunately, it turned out that way. I, I wish it would have succeeded, because we always need those jobs.
With all due respect, sir, there was no study done ahead of time. There were so many things that ducks had to be lined up before you even should have jumped in there, and I'm sorry, that's what happened, and everybody knows what's, that sort of happened.
Okay, and let the record show this, that this county has not had an economic development initiative to create jobs since that project went away. What did we do in the last eight years to try to create jobs or bring jobs here? The answer is nothing. No, the floor isn't for that. I knew I was worried. Any other guests concerning county business? Yes?
Diane Prokop, Jim Thorpe, Montgomery Street, right next door to St. Mark's Church. Tonight, the third annual Jim Thorpe Independent Film Festival opens at the Machunk Opera House and runs through Sunday. Its credo is eyes and minds wide open. With that in mind, I hope you'll consider this option to attain some of the county's much-needed office space, opening up possibilities for less expensive projects at locations other than Sesquahana Street, and providing a sustainable work environment well into the future. Telecommuting or teleworking has proven successful at all levels of government, from federal and state to county. Did you know that 20% of federal government employees telecommute at least one day a week, and 40% are eligible to do so? A 2016 study showed that participation in remote work programs has increased steadily, and that telework has helped the federal government save money, retain valuable employees, and maintain operations during emergencies. It has also has proven to put a dent in Washington DC traffic congestion, something that is sorely needed here in the county seat. 10 government agencies with remote jobs include the General Services Administration, the Department of the Interior, the Department of Commerce, Department of Veterans Affairs, Department of Transportation, Department of the Treasury, Small Business Administration, and the Census Department. Statewide programs exist in Arizona, Connecticut, Delaware, and others. Minnesota, in its telecommuting strategic plan, points out that the reduced need for office space may translate to reduced capital bonding and operating costs, including rent, utilities, insurance, furnishings, security, cleaning, and maintenance. Traffic congestion and the need for parking facilities may also be reduced. Likewise, employees no longer have to pay the gas and parking and car expenses and childcare that would go along with having the ability to telecommute. When the city of Los Angeles commissioned a telecommuting study, researchers found that the average financial benefit from telecommuting was between $8,000 and $12,000 annually per employee. The San Luis Obispo California Council of Governments conducted a feasibility study on telecommuting and estimated that if all county government employees were telecommuting at the statewide average rate of 15%, the county would save an estimated $9,168,000 annually. Montgomery County, Maryland, after completion of a successful pilot program, introduced the telework program in 2017. The goals of the program are to increase employee productivity and morale and support MCG's mission to provide a sustainable work environment for today and the future. Likewise, that would give you the space that you need moving forward and not just at this time. The number of days per week or month that employees may telework is subject to management discretion there and based on the operating needs of the employing department. Again, I hope you would consider that, looking into that and seeing whether or not that is something that might help alleviate some of the crowding because you would have desk shares, so that everybody's not in the county office every day of the week.
We do a little bit more vacuum arranging offices, et cetera, where they go out to the homes and get information, they take their laptop. We are doing a little bit of that now, but in particular, the offices we had slated for this particular building is all court-related, where they're in and out of the courthouse for court cases, pre-trials, et cetera, and it's a little hard to do in those, okay?
I, I understand for, for those particular employees, but perhaps if there are other employees that would qualify for something like that, there could be a little bit of shuffling and a more feasible project at another location would work. So I hope you consider that.
And again, we have been working on that, I think one of the biggest ones we've been doing right now is the GIS and mapping, making things more available online. We have less people coming in, and hopefully we can continue to do programs like that where people can do more things online, such as collections and things of that nature. We are looking at some of those issues, okay? Any other guests?
Just have a one minute, Sandy Spear, West Broadway. I'm going to talk a little bit about, just about the town of Jim Thorpe, it's, as we probably all know, it's a destination area, voted Michelin Top 5 Small Cities in the United States, and that's come as a result of like the merchants, the restaurants, the galleries, the historians, the museums, and just neighbors working very hard to make it so. There's festival committees that have a festival at least once a month, and they entertain folks from all over New York, DC, Philly. It's more than a destination, it's a rejuvenating and solstice experience. People keep returning, there's been thousands of weddings here, thousands of proposals, due to the, you know, a lot of hard work by the community. But, but, I've lived here for 17 years, and the constant complaint is the traffic in the parking. And it seems to be inaction from, you know, the people in this, no, not the people in this room, but the power that is of the three seats in the front. It seems like the parking has gotten worse. Just Valentine's, Saturday morning, it took me 30 minutes early in the morning to come down. And a friend of mine took her an hour to come down Mansion Hill to get into town. This, this, it's time to correct this, this problem. But instead of dealing with the traffic, it seems to me the Sesquahana Street project will make it worse. In other words, you're going to create privileged parking and just, and take away the public parking. I want to see some correction to the traffic and the parking. There's been a lot of opposition to the project spearheaded by St. Mark's, they're, they're a very good, they do tours in the church. People, people from all over the country, Episcopalians and others are, are going on the tour, and it's a precious gem. And any, any cause to destroy the, the rock through vibrations on which that church sits is, it's got to be stopped. I mean, in my opinion, of course. But the, the opposition to this has united, as Mr. Drury said, hunters, firemen, Republicans, Democrats, socialists, everyone is united against the planned project as it is, Rick.
My name is Patricia Brunson, I live on the Heights in Jim Thorpe, and I wanted to thank you for letting me speak, and I want to tell all the young people here that, you know, if you're 18, listen up. What's going on right now is I'm part of this committee that's called SOS Committee, and the website is sos- sos-cc.info. And what we're opposed to, or I should say me personally I'm opposed to, is many reasons for that parking facility to be there. But I just, last time I spoke, it was about a month ago, and I told you that I live here because I want to live here, and that I moved here within like the first time I, I saw Jim Thorpe, because I fell in love with it and decided to buy a house right then and there, bought a house, have businesses here, I reset all that. But what I wanted to say today is that I, you know, I woke up saying I'm going to take the morning off work, I work from home, I'm self-employed, so that's expensive for me, but I did it because I feel very important about this. And I walked here from my house, which is about a 15-minute walk, and as I walked here, I grabbed a cup of coffee from the coffee shop on the hill, asked the guy, said, "Hey, where are you going?" And I said, "I'm going down to the meeting with commissioners." He goes, "Tell them, I don't have time to go down there, but I'm against the $13 million private garage, are they kidding me?" Then I walked a little bit more, I saw a woman pushing her baby, she goes, "Hey, Patsy, where are you going?", all dressed up. I said, "Down to see the commissioners." She goes, "Can I come with the baby?" I said, "I don't know, I'll ask." "Can she, can she come with the baby?"
Yes.
Okay, next time. So then I walked a little bit more, and there's a, a guy that does all the remodeling in my neighborhood, and he goes, "Hey, Patsy, where are you going?", all dressed up. I said, "To talk to commissioners." He said, "Tell them that I oppose that $13 million project, or 14, 15, whatever it turns out to be." And I thought, "Well, why don't you come with me?" He says, "Are you kidding me, I'm here since 5:00 in the morning." So I just said last time, how many people do I represent by being here? And how many people want to be here? And I'm just talking about from my 15-minute walk. By the way, I walked more than across the street, I didn't bring my car, okay? But what I wanted to say is that, oh, there's a lot of elderly in this, in this county, I know, because I speak to them. There's a lot of, you know, young parents that can't leave their children unattended. There's a lot of school mothers that stay home and do work from home, and a lot of people that commute into Alentown. I know all these people because they're my neighbors. Nobody wants to pay for your parking garage, for your employees, when we struggle with our own lives. That's all I have to say, thank you for listening.
Anyone else?
Yeah, good morning, Chris Lukasevich from Jim Thorpe. Commissioner Nottstein, we're still awaiting some feedback on why the county continues to guarantee about $20 million for hospitals that are in a system that has $1.5 billion in revenues. Again, we ask for a layman's answer to that question, I know you said you'd get back to us on that.
Well, we will, and I think I, Mr. Edelman, who was here that day, gave an excellent explanation of that when he was here that day, and-
The citizens disagreed, the feedback to me was, all right, they asked for a layman's.
It's actually very simple.
Great, Dan.
Okay, because the county guaranteed bonds from the Blue Mountain Health System through the hospital authority, and we have people here today who are on the hospital authority. And obviously, the commissioners agreed, again, to not issue the bonds, but guaranteed the bonds for the benefit of preserving approximately 300 jobs of people within the county. Now, and that was able, and able to keep the system operating and keep those businesses going.
That was then, which would recap-
Now, so what happens is those bonds were issued, and the county guarantee was for the bonds issued by Blue Mountain Health. Okay? So, and that is the sole document that exists, is the guarantee particularly for those bonds. You will find no document, you will find no legal obligation. And Mr. Wenger explained this when he was here the last time, and if we can make it in black and white and as simply as possible, there is no document, there is no written guarantee, there is no obligation on behalf of the county of Carver for any bonds, obligations, borrowings, or any dealings of the St. Luke's Health System. And if anybody believes that there is, then we would ask them to show us where that is so we can address it.
Now, the financial reporting indicates that guarantees still exist.
Certainly, on the Blue Mountain bonds for the Blue Mountain Health System, and that is all.
So who sat at the negotiating tables with St. Luke, a hospital that gets $1.5 million to ensure citizens' equities were considered? No, thank you, okay, I'll continue.
Oh, that's Mr. Lukasevich, in order to be fair to answer that question, is that was a private deal between two private corporations, between Blue Mountain Health and St. Luke's.
Of which we had a $30 million in guarantees.
If you wish to address as to what the standing of the obligation for the payment of that indebtedness is, you can speak to the representatives of Blue Mountain Health and St. Luke's. But the county, again, since you're looking for a layman's answer and a black and white answer, it's very simple. The county does not and has not guaranteed any obligation of the St. Luke's Health System.
Well, thank you for that, thank you for your answer. So, Commissioner Gerhardt, how many dogs on average are in the dog shelter, do you know?
I would not know that answer right now.
How many active firefighters do we have in Carver County? No, no, Commissioner Gerhardt, how many active firefighters? No, no, well, let me go, no, Commissioner Nottstein.
Mr. Lukasevich, that has nothing to do with county government right now.
It does, we just pulled the rug out from under our volunteer firefighters and emergency services personnel. We're cutting 60% out of a project that Commissioner Gerhardt said we're 110%- said we're a hundred and ten percent behind this project. He said on eleven April, a week before, you cut over sixty percent of this project. That is so critical. You can't put a price on public safety or someone's life. That's, that's quote. So we do need to know. What was his position? Did you stand opposed to reduction of that critical training center to our volunteers?
I'm gonna let the chairman address.
No, we want to know. The public wants to know your position.
Our comment is addressed to the chairman, Mr. Lukasevich. That is the protocol of public comment.
Well, then again, we need to reread that. Then, solicitor, then we need to reread the guidance that the Commissioner Notsteen read to us just a couple weeks ago. It didn't say it would be directed to the chairman. So then again, I'll go to John's comment. When is our opportunity to have a conversation in public with our elected officials? Thank you.
Any other guests concerning county business?
I'm just sorry that the students here today have to see.
Yeah. Okay. Let me, this, the chairman for the board, this is our policy. Shall preside over the public comment period of may with his discretion. Recognize individuals wishing to offer comment. We require identification of such persons. Allocate available time among individuals wishing to comment. Rule out any other or order scandalous, impertinent, redundant comment or any comment to this concernable purpose, of which is to disrupt or prevent the conduct of the business of the meeting. The time allotted for each speaker is at the public comment period, and each meeting shall be three minutes. Any other guests? There are none? We'll move on.
Next item is the proclamation to Corrections Employee Week, May fifth through eleventh, two thousand nineteen.
Motion to adopt the proclamation.
Second motion.
Mr. O'Gore?
Yes.
Mr. Gerhart?
Yes.
Mr. Notsteen?
Yes.
The next item is the opening of bids.
Oh, oh, we're gonna prevent it. Oh, I'm sorry.
Good morning. I want to thank commissioners for allowing me to come to read this proclamation today from Governor Tom Wolf. Proclamation is about Corrections Employee Week, which is May fifth through the eleventh, two thousand nineteen. The proclamation reads, whereas Pennsylvania's correctional system is the oldest in the nation, evolving from the establishment of Philadelphia's Walnut Street Jail in seventeen seventy-three and the Eastern Penitentiary in eighteen twenty-nine. And whereas the Pennsylvania system, as it has become known, was the leading influence in the development of penology throughout the nineteenth century and the forerunner of modern corrections. And whereas today Pennsylvania faces continued difficult challenges in corrections, with twenty-four state correctional institutions, one motivational boot camp, a training academy, a central office, eleven community correction centers, and thirty-two contract facilities, along with sixty-three county prisons and jails, and fifteen federal facilities and offices, our correctional facilities house approximately ninety-six thousand inmates. And whereas a secure and safe operation and management of those facilities rests in the hands of nearly thirty thousand trained, skilled, and dedicated corrections professionals. There are corrections administrators, administrators, corrections officers, counselors, treatment specialists, educators, clerical support staff, business administrators, and purchasing agents, personnel and labor relations specialists, reentry specialists, social workers, clergy, medical professionals, food service specialists, computer technicians, planners, and research analysts, and skilled craft people upon whose skills, efficiency, and professionalism in the functions of the Pennsylvania correction system depends. Whereas although each of these dedicated professionals work in a different field and specialize in a specific area, all are committed to a common goal. The secure, safe, and humane operation of our Commonwealth's correctional facilities where employees work to reduce future crime through the delivery of programs to change an individual's criminal behavior. Therefore, I, Governor Tom Wolf of Pennsylvania, do hereby proclaim May fifth through the eleventh, two thousand nineteen, as Corrections Employee Week in Pennsylvania. I encourage all Pennsylvanians to recognize the vital role these dedicated professionals play in ensuring, ensuring the effective operation of our correctional system in the interest of public safety. Signed, Tom Wolf, Governor. Thank you.
I would like to give you a proclamation on behalf of the commissioners for all the corrections workers. I must say that those are not the best clientele. They have a lot of good inmates, et cetera, but some of the clientele that we have in that prison are not easy to deal with. They'll throw urine on you, feces, you name it. They're extremely difficult to deal with. We have anywhere from murderers, rapists, child molesters. Unfortunately, for those that have to go to the prison maybe for some minor issues, non-child support, they're ideal and good inmates, work release people that may have made a mistake, gotten a DUI, trying to correct their lives, they're serving their time, they're doing what they need to lead a productive life when they get back out of the prison. But I have to hand it to the, the, a lot of the corrections officers with the things they have to put up with at the prison, but yet they have to respect those inmates. And if not, then we get sued. It's okay for whatever they can do to our corrections officers, but we can't be nasty to them. So thank the, all the employees at the county prison for what you do up there and for what they do in particular.
Thank you, Patricia.
Thank you. All right. Sorry about that.
Now, opening of bids. CDVD projects. First project is Palmerton Borough Street Improvement. This is reconstruct, repave, West Princeton from Fireline Road to Hillside Avenue. Fiscal years two thousand fifteen and two thousand sixteen. First bid.
Yeah. What we're doing here while we're opening up the envelope, anything over eleven thousand one hundred dollars, we have to go out and get at least three price quotes for a project. Anything over twenty thousand six hundred dollars, we have to get a bid. That doesn't say, a lot of times, we may get some services or have something to do with a bid that we should still have to go out on bids under that ten thousand or eleven thousand dollars just to get our better price. But the problem there sometimes is when we have to draw specs, we have to hire engineers or architects and do a detailed spec on the bidding process, and it gets rather expensive going out to bids a lot of times. So today we're opening up, I think somebody said, what, twenty-four, twenty-eight bids, which quite a bit of money for the community development program.
No, not that many.
Maybe, well, maybe you're lying to me there.
We were talking two different things here.
Yeah. Okay. What, what?
No, you're lying to me.
Okay. Our first bidder is Barker &amp; Barker Paving and Excavating out of Bethlehem, Pennsylvania. And the total amount bid, one hundred twenty-six thousand, two hundred eighteen dollars, seventy-five cents.
There is a ten percent.
Okay, the next bidder is Dirt Work Solutions LLC out of Sladington, Pennsylvania. The amount bid, one hundred seventy-five thousand, two hundred fifty-three dollars. Next bidder is Lehigh Asphalt Paving and Construction Company of Tamqua, Pennsylvania. The total amount bid, one hundred fifty-nine thousand, five hundred ninety-five dollars.
There is a ten percent bid.
And the last bidder for this project is Schuylkill Paving Incorporated of Schuylkill Haven, Pennsylvania. The amount bid, one hundred seventy-four thousand, two hundred sixty-two dollars, fifty cents.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that the bids be tabled and turned over to our Office of Planning and Development for Review and a recommendation of either an award of contract or rejection of the bids in two weeks.
Second motion.
Mr. O'Gore?
Yes.
Mr. Gerhart?
Yes.
Mr. Notsteen?
Yes.
Our next project is Palmerton Borough Street Improvements, reconstruct, repave, Avenue A from first to second. Fiscal year two thousand seventeen. The first bidder is Barker &amp; Barker Paving and Excavating out of Bethlehem, Pennsylvania. The amount bid, seventy-eight thousand, two hundred sixty-three dollars and fifty cents.
There is a ten percent bid.
Next bidder is Dirt Work Solutions LLC of Sladington, Pennsylvania. And the amount bid is one hundred nine thousand, three hundred ninety dollars.
There is a ten percent bid.
Next bidder, Lehigh Asphalt Paving and Construction Company of Tamqua, Pennsylvania. The amount bid, seventy-five thousand, eight hundred eighty-five dollars. Next bidder is Schuylkill Paving Incorporated of Schuylkill Haven, Pennsylvania. The amount bid, ninety-one thousand, eight hundred seventy-five dollars.
There is a ten percent bid.
Next bidder is Barcalanti Construction of Northampton, Pennsylvania. The amount bid, sixty-five thousand, nine hundred forty-five dollars, ninety cents. Okay, and the last bidder for this project is Live and Good Excavators out of Walnut Port, Pennsylvania. And the amount bid, eighty-nine thousand, one hundred twenty-two dollars, seventy-two cents.
There is a ten percent bid.
Make a motion the bids be tabled, turned over to our Office of Planning and Development for Review, and a recommendation of an award of contract or rejection of the bids in two weeks.
Second motion.
Mr. O'Gore?
Yes.
Mr. Gerhart?
Yes.
Mr. Notsteen?
Yes.
The next project is the Tapper Township Facilities of Parkland Recreation, Joe Andrewsy Community Park, fiscal year two thousand and fourteen. One bidder, Stony Lonesome Excavating of Sonopil, Pennsylvania. The amount bid, sixty-eight thousand, three hundred fifty dollars.
There is a ten percent bid.
I make a motion the bid be tabled and turned over to our Office of Planning and Development for Review, and a recommendation of an award of a contract or rejection of the bid in two weeks.
Second motion.
Mr. O'Gore?
Yes.
Mr. Gerhart?
Yes.
Mr. Notsteen?
Yes.
Next item is the Report of Executive Sessions Health.
For none.
Department reports, budget transfers.
So moved.
Second motion.
Mr. O'Gore?
Yes.
Mr. Gerhart?
Yes.
Mr. Notsteen?
Yes.
There are no supplemental appropriations. Expenditures applicable, check numbers, two zero five, two zero two, through two zero five, three six five. For expenditures through the general fund, to an account totaling three hundred and two thousand, nine hundred thirty-two dollars, eleven cents.
So moved.
Second motion.
Mr. O'Gore?
Yes, with the exception of bills for the Times News and Blue Ridge Communications, to which I abstain because I'm a part-time employee of the Times News, which is a sister company of Blue Ridge Communications. And I'd like to turn over to the Keeper of Records a memorandum stating my potential conflict of interest with PennCor related companies as per the House of the State Ethics Commission.
Mr. Gerhart?
Yes.
Mr. Notsteen?
Yes.
The Treasurers report?
To approve.
Second motion.
Mr. O'Gore?
Yes.
Mr. Gerhart?
Yes.
Mr. Notsteen?
Yes.
Personnel report?
So moved.
Second motion.
Mr. O'Gore?
Yes.
Mr. Gerhart?
Yes.
Mr. Notsteen?
Yes.
Correspondence was received as listed. Copies will be made available to the press upon request. Advertising. Area agency on aging for approval. Authorize the advertisement regarding the appraised counseling for Medicare recipients.
So moved.
Second motion.
Mr. O'Gore?
I abstain because I'm a part-time employee of the Times News where the advertisement will be placed.
Gerhart?
Yes.
Mr. Notsteen?
Yes.
Human Services, TFA agreement for approval and execution. Letter of agreement regarding interim addendum to the Program Management Agreement between the County of Carbon and the Pennsylvania Department of Agriculture, participation in the Emergency Food Assistance Program, which commenced October first, two thousand sixteen, and remains in effect through September thirtieth, two thousand twenty-one. The interim agreement clarifies federal regulatory requirement relating to participation of the county in the TFA and is effective as of the date of last signature.
So moved.
Second motion.
Mr. O'Gore?
Yes.
Mr. Gerhart?
Yes.
Mr. Notsteen?
Yes.
Planning and development for approval and execution, the Act one oh one, section nine oh three, recycling coordinator grant application for two thousand and eighteen with an estimated reimbursement of four thousand, five hundred sixty-five dollars and sixteen cents.
So moved.
Second motion.
Mr. O'Gore?
Yes.
Mr. Gerhart?
Yes.
Mr. Notsteen?
Yes.
The Solicitors report?
Thank you. Children and youth special counsel for approval and execution, agreement between the County of Carbon and Holly A. Heinsen Esquire for appointing to serve as conflict counsel to the Carbon County Children and Youth Services at the rate of sixty-five dollars per hour.
So moved.
Second motion.
Mr. O'Gore?
Yes.
Mr. Gerhart?
Yes.
Mr. Notsteen?
Yes.
Correctional facility for approval and execution, maintenance service agreement between the Pennsylvania District Attorney's Institute in Carbon County relative, relative to the statewide automated victim information and notification system in Carbon County. The term is January one, twenty nineteen, to December thirty, one, twenty nineteen. There is no cost to the county for twenty nineteen.
So moved.
Second motion.
Mr. O'Gore?
Yes.
Mr. Gerhart?
Yes.
Mr. Notsteen?
Yes.
Parks and Recreation for approval and execution, special activities agreement is submitted for Renegades Incorporated
Special Activities Agreement is submitted for Renegades Incorporated College of Pennsylvania for a half marathon run, May eleventh, two thousand nineteen. Jim Thorpe Sportsman Club for the sixty-seventh annual children's fishing contest, May nineteenth, two thousand nineteen, pending approval of the Pennsylvania Fish and Boat Commission. And Child Evangelism Fellowship of Carbon and Lehigh Counties for Good News Day Camp for Children, July eighth through the twelfth, July fifteenth to nineteenth, two thousand nineteen, ten a.m. to four p.m. daily.
So moved. Second motion.
Mr. O'Gore.
Yes.
Mr. Gerhart.
Yes.